I'll make a motion to approve this, okay?
I have a second, Matt.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion is carried. Mr. Anderson up in the hall or anything? If not, we'll just stop them, McCaffrey.
Yeah, it's really simple, we have one bridge that does qualify for replacement, but it's kind of a curious place, it's uh over by uh a derrode township on Front Street. So it's not a highly traveled road. The fact that it's south end, it's closed right now. They don't maintain it this summer. I think they have done some work to get it tr- this one that uh William talks about once in a while, it's back open here. North of the hatch.
Uh what what elevation is that?
It was in on that bridge was in updated in eleven, so.
Okay, so it's probably fifty-four, fifty-five, somewhere in that range?
So if we did replace this bridge, it would have to be a great raise. Of course, uh like I said, the road was even under water, south of it. So there'd be a humping of road where the bridge is, that type of thing. So just to bring you guys aware, making you guys aware, I don't know if it's something I'll put on our list or not, but it's one of our bridges that does for all time.
It's not currently being used?
Light traffic or maybe some car traffic. Very, very low, maybe hunting and fishing.
It doesn't hurt us at all putting it on the list and then?
See how it goes.
See how it goes.
Right, if eventually if we were to open that road to the south end, it may have a good chance of being chosen or picked or whatever. Right now, it would be tough to pick it up on the top of the list. Not a variable between now and fourth of July.
We're talking a three-foot water raise possibly, and who knows?
Last fall, there was probably eighteen inches, a foot to eighteen inches of clearance between the water and the bottom concrete beam.
With outlets at least.
So it's at that level right now, or last fall. You know, and of course, there's like eighteen inch beams, so the water could come up another two feet before the deck is gonna be. But anyway, just something to think about, I guess, we don't really need to act on today. That bridge wouldn't qualify for replacement.
You can just put culvert in and hold great.
Probably could, there's not a lot of flow there.
Okay, don't worry, talk.
So if it comes to the point where they finally get that road open to the south, then maybe we would want to look at it for sure then. Because it would get a lot better chance of being chosen than that. So that's really all I have to present today.
You see enough, thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, you can.
Roger.
Yeah. Okay, talked with Bobcat, and um you know, the the smaller um S seventy, the skid steer, they do not have any of those in stock or will not for a while because of they're not making right now, they're going after bigger models that are more popular. This um articulated loader loader that is in stock, it has only the bucket available right now. And they said the blower and broom, that would be a next season thing. I talked to leading edge, and they have a what basically is a small John Deere tractor that would be adequate. Has uh but there are none of those in stock right now, and all they would get to be able to get in would be the tractor with the small bucket, and the bucket on that is half of what a Bobcat bucket would be. You know, the bucket on John Deere tractor is very small. So, and they had a forty-seven inch blower and fifty-two inch um broom, which is roughly the same size as the Bobcat. The um snowboards are two, I think that was fifty-two on that.
That tractor doesn't have a heated cap, does it?
The tractor does have a cap.
Oh, it does have a cap.
Why?
Is it heated?
Pardon?
Heated?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything's got a cap, right?
Yes.
We're looking at something that'll have a cap.
Correct. Heat cap. And I talked to Butler, and they had nothing available, and anything they that would be bigger than we're looking for. So their blower is sixty-six inches wide. I'm just like, yeah, that's a little more than trying to go around on a sidewalk, trying to get the light hole involved in.
How wide is their sidewalk?
Well, sidewalk itself is, it would be okay on, but uh getting between some of these light holes and the firm or the curb, that would be an issue. So, on that bigger bigger blower, on the fifty-two inch blower, I think that wouldn't be a problem. So, the like I said, the the John Deere, it would work. Possibly on half of what the Bobcat does, but the Bobcat um loader articulated loader would be much more usable. It'd be an all-around much better thing to have. You know, it's uh you'd have four-wheel drive where the buck, the John Deere does too little, tell you about this being on the front. Yeah, so the John Deere would be better than walking behind, be ten foot, maybe ten horsepower, no lower than that, but.
You can get a lot more attachments for like a skid steer, you know?
Probably. Well, the the John Deere had all the all the at the same time we're looking for, but like I said, the bucket on that is just sound player or two, Bobcat bucket.
I didn't even know they made a little articulated loader like that.
John Deere?
Or well, no Bobcat, I didn't even know they made one like that, those are, that'd be a slick little unit because it that would, you could push with that nice, you could stick a snowblower on the front, it's all front mount, kind of like a tour cat, that'd be really nice.
Did we talk last night, is it much easier to be in than the skid steer?
Yeah, the the skid, yeah, so skid steer, the John Deere thing, and also you've got it from the side. But the side deer, yeah, versus uh going over top of the bucket on the skid steer. So.
But you said like the the articulated loader, they could get the loader, but not the attachments?
Not not the.
You have the bucket, and that would be it.
Yeah, not the. And that was the same with all.
Okay, so basically you can get the machine with the blower or with the bucket, but no blower, no broom on it right now.
And with the John Deere things, um they they don't have anything in stock, they said if you put a name on it, you could get it as early as two weeks, or could be can watch. So.
It's not gonna sell anymore, right?
Fair enough.
Oh. You kind of think that Bobcat's the one?
Well, yeah.
Thirty-one, I would have wondered.
No, it's.
The skid steer or the articulated?
No, not the skid, well, yeah, the skid steer, they don't have available places. Like I said, that is available, unless they've sold it in the last week.
So they have one on the lot?
They have one on hand, they said it's a holdover from last year. So chances of going on the last week are pretty small.
Sitting outside?
Yeah, it was anyway.
I drove by, it's pretty sharp looking, but it looks like it'd be fun.
For a little while.
Yeah, for a little while.
I just think there's there's benefits. I mean, all of these things are, you know, but something like an articulated loader or a skid steer are gonna be far easier to flip out, broom to blower to bucket versus versus a tractor, I mean, not that there's anything wrong with a little John Deere tractor, I'm sure that would, like you said, it would serve our needs too. I guess it would be a little bit more difficult though.
Quick attach.
Yeah, quick attach is always nicer, plus, like you said, not having to crawl over the bucket to get in. On a on a skid steer would be a little bit, it would be nicer to go outside entrance.
Safer.
Yeah. Like it's basically just like a mini payloader.
Mm-hmm.
Which you can move a lot of snow.
Yeah, it's just like running off, big loader, I mean, normally it's a smart scale.
Yeah. That'd be, I think that would be kind of the catch me out in terms of being able to move snow out here. If they're not huge, no doubt, it's still. I'm surprised Cat didn't have anything out there that they.
Well, like I said, anything they have, it would be a lot bigger.
Yeah.
And I guess I checked with High Plains Equipment too, and anything they have was way bigger.
So not not for sidewalk, they have structure that we're looking for.
We're not hoping for sidewalks.
Hey, and either of these funds, Candy, we take out of that law enforcement COVID? Because I don't know if we've budgeted for any of this, did we? Excuse me?
Uh building improvement.
Building improvement.
Just.
Long-term.
Long-term.
As long as the generator can come off the other.
Because you got money sitting there for the generator, yeah?
Yeah, because that was budgeted in the building improvement.
We did budget for the generator, then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I think if we've got it on the lot, and that's the one we think's gonna get the job done, that's the way we should go, I mean, just in my opinion, I guess. I know it costs more money, but I guess I looked at, we were talking about it the other day, and it's a matter of, you know, how long do you think it's gonna last? I mean, if it's built well, it should last a long time for us, but, you know, say it lasts forty, forty-seven thousand dollars, but if it lasts twenty years before you gotta do anything, I mean, that's a couple thousand bucks a year, snow is really quite reasonable in terms of making it quicker and a little bit a lot more comfortable, a lot safer. Just it makes sense to me, I guess.
Well, and I think, you know, if we get something like this, you're gonna find more uses for it than you thought you were gonna have.
Oh, yeah.
And it's like like buying a truck, I never thought I'd need a truck until I owned a truck, and all of a sudden it seems like everything needs to be held somewhere.
Good thing, the problem with that is is when people know you, and they must have been prepared to come. No, but I mean, just even stuff like having a broom on it, you know, in the summertime, I mean, when stuff blows in and stuff, and you're gonna go and leave whatever, it's gonna be useful, stuff like that, broom.
So the light aggradiant, the light aggradiant snow, they, you know, you could go down, right down to the pavement of the sidewalk and.
And just when you get that stroller in the afternoon, you get a half inch or an inch, just do a broom on it, bang, and it's done.
I'd go ahead and make that a motion, that we go ahead with the Bobcat articulating.
I'll say it.
You want to include all of the other features listed here, yeah, on our motion? So for a total of forty-seven thousand three ninety-three?
Correct.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all the same sign. Motion is carried.
Um one thing, and I've mentioned this before, we're gonna have this here. You know, we'll need a building, have to put a building up, and I just ordered garage doors for home last week. They expect them to be here May ninth, is what they're figuring on. So, keeping that in mind, we would have to at least probably get a garage door ordered fairly quickly. So we make sure we have it here this summer to put into the building.
Are we gonna have to build a brand-new, like, single-car garage-type setup?
Yeah.
No, because they're on launch, but there's no way that that would ever take. Yeah. And we would send it right to the south of the Sheriff's House, there would be the thought process?
Somewhere in area, so yeah, that'd be my guess.
Is there a way we could de- design it to add on to the existing building that we have there?
Um well, I don't know.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't be nice.
Come try to pull it if you want, or lose a private property for it.
Yeah.
No, as far as the the generator building.
Oh, um, you know.
Yeah, because are we gonna have to make the generator building bigger bigger when we bring the generator?
No, that should fit.
Yeah.
Once we get everything, I got the blowers up in there, so the new generator should fit in the generator. At least the one that we were looking at, uh uh the most, um.
The the previous one you showed us, yes, that I think is.
When do we expect the generator? Pardon? When do we expect the generator?
Well, we haven't even ordered yet, I mean, we gotta do all that too, and I was talking Candy about that, maybe the next meeting, you know, there's gotta be a uh uh kind of a bid process for the architect or engineer, which we'll have to have, so, yeah, none of that's been done yet.
Well, I think it's.
Spec sheet on the generator.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I think it's reasonable, at least in my mind, that we wait until we get the engineer in place to determine if they think that our building size is gonna be adequate, because if they think we have to build something, then we can just make the building size right to for putting them.
Right, it's gonna save, it's gonna save you so much space if you don't have two separate standalone buildings up.
But, you know yeah, I don't know.
Assuming that we can, you, we can use this hopefully, but if we can't, then we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there, I guess.
I know we talked about just driving the blower back and forth to the county shop.
For now, for now.
For now, yes, we'll have this season, yes, but not, you know, eventually we'll have to come up with a plan on how we're gonna keep it, yeah.
Boy, we only needed one more, one time, right?
This year, maybe.
We'll we'll work on a building plan down the road kind of thing, and.
Well, I think once we put, yeah, once we put the wheels and wheels in order to determine what we're gonna need for the generator, then we can kind of go from there, because if if that building's adequate, then we could just put something next to it, probably. The only question I would have too is, that building was added on at some point in time, I would assume? The little generator building?
Yeah.
Or is that, that's not original to the Sheriff's House, is it?
No, it was built probably in roughly eighty-three, eighty-two, you know, it doesn't have any of the Sheriff's House.
Yeah, because we don't wanna touch the Sheriff's House, because if we do that, then I'm sure you've got all kinds of historic or whatever you have to deal with.
But they may not want you adding on to that keeping the generator building separate from our.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of questions to be answered, but for now, we can go back and forth until we can come up with a long-term plan for our, you know, candidate.
But generators goes off a lot of heat, I mean.
Yeah.
Motor heat. Probably a lot of that.
And they already said, you know, um, that um vending system, I think it should have been about twice of what it is. And they will be, I know.
They they proposing a natural gas generator?
I didn't think they're not, but it would be a bad idea.
That would be the way to go.
That'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
If you got natural gas.
Get rid of that condensation issue with diesel and LG and everything else, I was talking to.
Never had an issue with that, but, yeah.
Well, yes, we've had issues with that thing starting, and and I'm wondering if that we've had to drain the fuel out of that thing.
Well, we've just, we have done that, just cleared it out and wait to keep problems from arising.
Well, yeah.
But yes.
And when natural gases, natural gases are all the time, you know?
Yeah, it's right there, there. They're in there for the Sheriff's House.
Keep in mind, you bet.
Yeah.
They'll probably tell us that a natural gas uh generator should probably look twice the money or something.
Well, you know, I I think the uh the fire department got um one from when N D T C got out of that facility by downtown here, they got that.
Also, they had generator, they bought it up.
And it was natural gas and um works great. And, you know, down in the airport, we've had issues with LG and diesel fuel and
Oh, yeah.
water and different things like that, and so natural gas would be a, I think a good option to take a look at.
I'd love to have natural gas out of the front.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so.
Well, I'll contact Bobcat then, phone worker. It's a articulated loader and it's a broom. The blower.
Thanks, Roger.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did we both?
No, maybe we didn't both.
I thought we did, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we did both.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We started to vote, so.
Yeah, we both, we both. Okay. So uh Mr. Cummings is not coming down?
Um, he is.
Oh, okay, that's too bad, hope he feels better soon, moving on, finished business. Uh we've got a line out the door, a hundred and fifty applications to choose from for the county county uh commission. So we're gonna be here for three hours looking through those.
We're willing to throw the two of that.
Second cap.
They're willing to do it.
Okay, we we have a motion in a second, I'll move those positions, uh all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries, thank you guys so much for moving to serve. Move on to new business, I'm going to ARPA update, and I'll turn it over to Adam, just just.
Oh, am I in charge? Well, um, I guess we had a meeting of our ARPA committee this past week, last week. Um, the interim final rule has now become the final rule on how you can spend the dollars. Um, Candy and myself both were able to attend the uh webinar, community dinner, on uh Terry Trainer as well as Liz Behovik from the Association of Counties put on. Um, good news, I guess, from the standpoint of you know, we thought we were gonna have our hands tied on how we could spend these dollars a lot, it pretty much opened it wide open. Um, so we can call it essentially lost revenue, uh and they're using, basically the treasury's giving a ten million dollar exemption on that lost revenue gap, so all two point two million dollars, give or take, we're receiving, we can call lost revenue and treat essentially as county general funds. So, the usage of it is a lot cleaner in terms of we, and and also the reporting of it is a lot cleaner, since it's under that dollar figure, we only have to report once a year versus uh once every quarter, and it allows us the ability to uh essentially, you know, delineate those funds a lot, a lot easier. Um, the committee felt that, uh you know, to start with, um we we wanted to get a feel from the commission as a whole uh on 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 our plan, the plan kind of was a rough fifty-fifty take on those dollars, where fifty percent we would use for county-wide improvements, whether it's courthouse, whether it's generator, whether it's whatever, and fifty percent of those dollars we would use for outside nonprofits to come in and ask us for, you know, things like maybe the Heritage Center needs some approvals, things like that would be an example. Uh, not a hard fifty-fifty, but just that was the thought, was use some for outside projects in the community to show the community that they're getting some benefit from those dollars. And the county also would get the benefit from some of those dollars on things that we maybe put off in the past too, that we should be getting done, that was just the initial intent. Um, the thought process was, if the commission as a whole is on board with that, then we'll move forward with that concept, if the commission as a whole is not on board with that, and they'd rather see those dollars spent in another way, then they would take that, you know, the come that, no committee would then take that into account, and we would determine where we're going forward from there then.
We also, sorry, just to piggyback on that, we also put together parameters for for scoring proposals. Um, so that, you know, if if proposals come in, we could score them, and and we had four categories that we were gonna use as as uh you know, how we wanted to score each of the proposals. Uh, one was longevity, how long, how long does it, does it do a good thing in the community for, uh population served? Uh, you know, how many people are going to benefit from whatever it is, uh what was the third one?
Um. I remember one of them being a qualitative, just one of the general concept, that do we think this is something that's necessary in the community, or something that could be of benefit, and I can't remember the fourth.
Oh, and then the the fourth one was match.
Oh, yes, we also, we'd like to have match dollars put in place for those nonprofit-type setups, so if it, if it's a project where that that's one thing that leads on to it, these dollars can be used as a match to federal dollars or some other grant dollars, there's no it's not like other federal dollars where you can't use federal dollars to then match federal dollars, so if we have a local nonprofit that has something that needs to get something done, and they can access grand dollars from another place, maybe say, for instance, the Outdoor Heritage Fund. We could use these dollars locally as a match to those dollars if there's a match in place, so we're trying to essentially take those dollars, those fifty percent dollars um and try to stretch them further. So we're we're saying, hey, if you're a nonprofit, you've got an idea, and you can find match dollars someplace else, fantastic, you get pushed up the list so that we can try to make these dollars go further, essentially is what the theory is behind it. Um, yeah, so we had a scoring system in place, timeline, we're talking um essentially, if the commission is is on board with the concept of what we're looking at, then we would uh meet next week, I think, is the thought process, we would finalize our, next week, tomorrow, tomorrow. We would finalize the plans, and then we would try to come up with a plan on how we would get the ideas, you know, to solicit those proposals from nonprofits and stuff like that in the community for those dollars that we're gonna have sitting there. I I know that I've had, and and as well as, as Lucas has had, uh different people come forward to us already saying, what what are the grounds it's gonna be, are those going to be available to the community, so the thought process is, we'd like to have this all wrapped up by that August, September timeframe, at least so we can score things, and then uh uh you know, put those dollars out to work in the community. Mostly simply because, you know, we still have the same parameters, twenty-four that have to be committed, twenty-six they have to be extended, but we know there's probably going to be all kinds of different ideas and things like that, that community, that community members are gonna have, because they know those dollars are out there, so. Uh but the 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 whole theory behind this is, or should I say the action plan, is if the commission is still on board with the concept of using some of these dollars for community projects versus just keeping it in-house and using it all for county projects. Essentially, it's the guidance that the committee would like to see, so we know that before we go out and start saying, hey, this is something we're gonna have money for, we don't say that, and then they're gonna be all of a sudden decides, hey, we could, we could use a million dollars, put it on a road project, or in addition to the or maybe build a new building over here for a generator, you know, those types of things, now that we have the ability to essentially use those funds for anything we would like.
Well, one thing, I'm probably gonna have to put off the lanes here. And back up at least one, but I hear all this too, so.
Yeah, and I think that's not unreasonable, at the time when we talked about having a meeting, we we didn't know Blaine wasn't going to be available. And, you know, I know there's, I know Blaine, obviously, from his perspective, something like the Fair Board
Yes.
that they're talking about, possibility of a building might be something they're gonna wanna put in on, obviously, so you know, there's, we've heard lots of different places that there's going to be asks, so to speak, and that's a good thing. The the main concern, at least from my opinion, uh and I'm not saying that it's something that's necessarily bad, but there is going to be a lot of counties that they'll just say, we can just spend this on, you know, it's an easy fix, you don't have to ask for outside, you can just spend it for a road or something, and I'm not saying that it's not necessarily a good idea, but this is a one-time chance, we get to spend some dollars that aren't earmarked for one thing, that we can maybe do some good in the community. Uh Lucas and I just been visiting the border, we're saying, you know, I think the last time that we had funds that weren't necessarily committed to one specific thing, I remember when we got this, the gym built at Sweetwater, those were funds after the two thousand eight financial crisis, and those things went to, and we got a gym out of it, look at how much that facility is used with the renovation of that school and that gym. You know, something for the community, hopefully, and it might, doesn't that, maybe one big project, maybe ten small projects, but something that we can show the community what what we can get out of these dollars is is kind of the hope.
Just to add in, after our last meeting, I picked up the My Hop paper, I don't know if you've got a copy of that, did you? Anyway, they had four county meetings in there, they were getting seven point five million, in the article, it said seven point five coming again this fall.
Yes.
It was in the next year, I should probably say fall, but in the next year. And they have a list of projects that they have used, I don't know I can't remember exactly how much it was, they say three million dollars, but it was all in house, projects that the county had and the and the commission was doing it themselves. And um then I guess, I haven't heard lately what they did, I haven't seen it in the paper, but I haven't picked up the My Hop paper.
They're gonna have some slightly different parameters too, just because they, since they're over that ten million dollar figure, they've got different recording parameters. Yeah, but they basically have the same parameters for that ten million and under, they can take that ten million and basically treat it as a county general funding. Yeah, but they basically have the same parameters for that ten million and under. They can take that ten million and basically treat it as a county general fund expenditure so they can use it for any house projects, things like that.
So if we go over ten.
Then that, that additional, like say they have the five over the top, then they have to do an equation to figure out if they can use more of those dollars just as county general fund. They're gonna have to treat those a little bit. There's a lot more flexibility than there was in the initial final, for the interim final rule where they basically, and I think it's reasonable because the National Association of Counties and they lobbied on the behalf of, and, you know, police and cities type of thing and saying, hey, we need to make these dollars easier to expend just from a, per uh, reported perspective. Because it's just, you know, it's making it simple.
The city of Minot was getting seven million. They, they had that in the article. And it was coming again this fall or within a year. And one of the things that Ward County did, they had a must have been a building up there. They'd hauled their main gate or in Sawyer in North Dakota and they were gonna they'd started the project and then they were gonna put money towards the engine. There was numerous projects they were addressing within the county.
But the one thing that hasn't changed is that, you know, the county and Candy are still on the hook for where it is. You know, just because it can be spent pretty much everywhere, we still are gonna need to have a receipt.
Oh, right, absolutely.
Yeah, and that's why at, at, at the meeting we talked, you know, we have to have parameters still on, you know. Essentially, how I look at it is if, is it a nonprofit or somebody, if they came and asked us just for county general fund dollars, could we extend those county general fund dollars to them? So something like the Heritage Center or the library or the, uh, you know, like the safe house, anybody that we in the past have said, yeah, we'll, we'll help fund your baseline budget, those are the kinds of organizations that could come in, ask for these dollars. Um, you know, maybe a senior, maybe the senior meals and services, but you know, maybe they need something, you know, things like that. Uh, individuals, private businesses, you know, they can't come in and, and look to expend these funds because we could give them money other county general in a normal situation. At least it would be my thought process on how that would function, but. But we just, you know, it's, it, it's gonna be easier and nicer and cleaner to be able to spend the funds, which is nice.
I'm amazed at how easy they were doing that for Ward County. I already, I already go, I've had twelve or fifteen different projects that had already given out money to them. Or had it in figures. I don't think they literally had given the money yet, so.
And the thought process being is that, you know, we, I'm sure we could find two point two million dollars worth of stuff to spend on just in the county. No problem.
I think we've already got some time.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, we could easily spend it, but I, I think in showing the community that we can help fund some of these other things, I mean, it's not just, you know, hey, we got one thing for the county or whatever, you know, I mean, we could, we can use these as one-time funds.
It, it, it's a good and bad problem.
Yes.
Be, because before we had a certain narrow band of parameters that we had to follow, that we could spend the money on. Now that it's more open, uh, I think, uh, we could either have more ass and we could fund a hundred different projects. We could fund one big project. We could fund, and and I think looking whether it be long-term, how is it gonna affect the voters of the people or the voters of the, the county, um, down the road? Is it gonna cost them money to, to? Are we gonna do something that's gonna have an ongoing expense coming back to them? Is it something that's gonna be needed that we've identified? Is gonna, we're, we're gonna have to spend this money somewhere down the road on this particular project or that particular project that we're gonna have to ask the voters to or go, go to the voters and say, hey, uh, you know, we're gonna have to purchase X, Y, and Z. And, you know, certainly one of the, the, the big issues, the, you know, the elephant in the room is is Chris back there, um, with the, the siren need. And, you know, the siren radios, big, big need, unfunded mandate. Um, and, and we all know that it's coming. And I think, uh, that certainly would be a big need. Um, I've been identified that it, it will have to be replaced. And it's something that the state has said that we're gonna have to do.
We gotta, we gotta address that somehow.
Yeah.
Whether we do it totally or whether we do part of it and then pitch it out of the general or a period of time.
And we talked about it at, at, at the ARPA meeting as well, that that would be a, a county ask essentially. Um, and I think as a commission here, we're gonna have to make a determination on how we're gonna handle that because, you know, and talking with Chris about it, we've got, obviously, we're gonna be on the hook for the sheriff's department radios and the emergency management radios, but then we have rural fire, we have, you know, highway, so we're gonna have to be on the hook for the highway radios. But like, there's gonna be outside entities like the rural fires that maybe it's gonna be tough for them to come up with money on the Mallard. So then, do we wanna provide them with X amount of dollars and then they can expend it on each department? I mean, we're gonna have to come up with some type of plan on how we're gonna do it. I mean, how we're gonna spend it on our radios locally is, well, we're just gonna buy the radios and figure out what we need to put it in and then we'll stick it in our budget. You know, and it's gonna be essentially general fund dollars, but can we offset those with these dollars? Yeah, of course. I mean, that's gonna have to be an option.
We should get the prices on the radios and what we need.
And what, what is the deadline for those too? I mean, yesterday?
Couple of years old.
Couple, couple of years old when Devil's Lake had switched over or the lake region gets switched over, but, um, I do get some rough numbers. It's roughly, I mean, without having the departments pick and choose which radio sets they need, want. Four thousand.
Four thousand radio.
Four radio.
Eight hundred thousand dollars and that's mi, and then minus the fifteen hundred back or whatever, we're gonna be on the hook between all of the entities in the region and the county who would have to have many of them.
Yeah. I asked all the responding agencies about radios they were looking at purchasing and all the rural fire departments, including Kevin's fire department. And it was, it worked out the hundred thousand dollar radio.
And, and if they did nothing and the switchover occurred, would they have communication with? They would have no, no communication with LEC or other IAGs or?
Each other, maybe.
Or each other, they'd have each, communication with each other maybe. Yeah.
But wouldn't that figure be less because we included the Devil's Lake Fire Department?
Yeah, that number was a little high because I found Devil's Lake Fire Department as well.
You could probably take fifty off that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They acquired a few radios.
Yeah.
In any, forty-five or? In any case, you know, that this, I think, is one of the nice things about having a committee like this is to act as a, as a buffering co-lator so that it can come in the form of a finished proposal. There's something where the, the committee could, could work with Chris behind the scenes, get, make sure his proposal comes in and here's exactly what's being proposed.
Yeah.
Something like that, you know, so, so I, I, even though the money's now freed up to use for everything from Lucas Wayfield as a commissioner, that kind of scares me because it's like, wow, now we can spend it on anything, however we want to spend it. Having a committee that has parameters, I think, is good, but maybe not.
Though I, I, I think it is good. You, you got a, a good outline of where your parameters are are set and the guidelines that you wanna go by and, uh, kind of thing.
I looked at it from this standpoint too. I mean, how many times have we said, boy, we'd like to be able to do something about that? But we just don't have the ability to stick it in our budget this year and then it turns into next year and next year and next year. I mean, I can think of, and they're not huge projects, but they're, you know, there's just projects out there from some of the entities that we don't fund that would be nice to be able to get done.
You know, and there's ideas within this building that we have talked about. Um, you know, we have a sixty-two-year-old building that hasn't had major renovations in, in that time period. There's been some some minor changes over the years. And, and it's a great facility. We don't wanna but could we better utilize some of the facility by doing some remodeling interior-wise?
Well, and that opens a whole nother category too from the question of, a lot of it's put is, a lot of those things we're talking about on renovation type things are pushed by the court system.
Sure.
Because we're gonna see more jury trials like we've seen large jury trials here. So then, the question then is, if those jury trials are coming in from other counties.
What are those other?
What are those other counties on the hook for as well as what is on this, what's the state on the hook for? Because the, the taxpayers of Reddington County, if we're gonna have to make some renovations to this building to make it more aligned with what they're looking for in the future, shouldn't be on the hook for all of those dollars?
Well, I'm not necessarily.
I don't, I don't even know that. I'm just saying.
But I'm not necessarily talking just through the floor. I, I think there's some issues on all the floors that, that could be addressed. Um, you know, the accessibility of the bathrooms on, on all the floors would be a big issue and that would be, you know, probably my starting point. You know, through from there and, and go out from that point, but, um, yeah. Um, it, it's, it's an interesting problem to have.
So better put it off on the side till next year or three years old.
But if we're, if we're, if we're looking at, at buildings or building up anything, I, I think, uh, timing is, is gonna become a crutch. Um, you know, we got all that money at the airport and the airport is moving up forward with we're gonna start looking at bid openings for terminal expansion, um.
Let's see if it adds up in Minot.
Yeah, so. So.
And that was part of the thought process behind hopefully getting it done by late summer, early fall is then we're talking, okay, if it's gonna be an indoor project, then maybe you can start doing that bid process right after that. If it's gonna be an outdoor project, you're already bidding for that next construction season in twenty-three then. You know, so the quicker we can come up with a plan that's reasonable.
Yeah.
And then that's where we wanted to come to the commission with an update too. So we at least we know that we're still kind of in the same thought process and we're not just gonna spend it all on one large county project, which is not necessarily a bad idea either. It's just an option.
Yeah.
But the, the thought between, I guess, I can't speak for Commissioner, but my thought is, you know, if we're getting this one-time pot of dollars, it would be nice to show the community some type of benefit at the same time. So it, it, it doesn't even have to be huge projects, but just little things that the community can see we're putting some investment into the community with those dollars instead of just the courthouse guy who likes, which isn't a bad way to end it, but I'm just saying, you know.
Like I said, Ward County had, looked at twelve, fourteen, fifteen different projects they were funding. You're already put dollars to the projects. Um, I don't remember a lot, man, other than that Sawyer.
Well, no, and I, and I, and I think we, we can show some of that as well.
Absolutely.
Well, you said like, there's even positive in courthouse projects that show things to the community, like updating audio, video, visual stuff in the meeting room. I mean, it's a positive thing because the community uses our facility for a lot of different stuff, so.
Do you?
Um. You know, but. So we've already done some stuff with, you know, some really good, good things with the dollars that we have already received. We got the law enforcement, uh, you know, we, we helped the senior center out with some dollars.
Very much.
You know, so there, there are some things that we've already done, uh, maybe not be at the scale that Ward County has done, but we haven't gotten the money they've got either. So.
No, and I don't necessarily, and that was the question of, we talked about it at the meeting as well as, you know, one transformational project, that's a large-scale cost versus smaller-scale projects and we're not gonna know where the money's gonna necessarily sit until we come up with the idea of this is how we're gonna split it possibly and then come up with solicit ideas. There might be one great project where a million dollars is makes sense. There might be ten that a hundred thousand out of ten makes sense. We don't know until we get to that one.
Yeah. I, I wish there wasn't some of these unfunded things that, that we, we know is looming over the horizon.
So we could use the dollars for more, yeah.
The, the dollars for a, a big benefit and.
I, I like radios, but I wish we already have radios.
Yeah.
But I guess we need to radio.
Well, thanks for leading that. I know there's no other questions on ARPA. We can move on to DOT.
Sorry, I keep talking.
Go on, on your phone.
All right.
I didn't, I wasn't here last meeting. I gotta get all my talk into the meeting.
No, it's, no, it wasn't. It's fine. But yeah, so that's, that's kind of the thought of where we're at with ARPA and, and, um, you know, we'll probably still have the meeting tomorrow, but if, if Commissioner Brown, if you don't want us to push to the community and say.
Oh, I think we should. We gotta get Blaine in the board anyway.
That's fine. I just, I mean, we just.
Gotta be, do their placements there and get care of it.
Well, I think it's, I think it's reasonable to have them on board because sitting on the fair board, I think, is, that they're gonna probably come up with an ask, I think. So I think it's reasonable that he knows what's going on to do a bit.
Like to your point of getting things started, you're going fifty-some counties with the same boat trying to hire X amount of contractors.
It may be all three years.
But the quicker you can get a bid that's locked is, is kind of the thought process, you know, within reason.
We're not optimistic if things are gonna be on a dollar price, no.
Is that ever happening in the world?
And.
Well, with the radios, if you last, the Devil's Lake Fire Department, that takes us down to like six, twelve. And with the rebate, it'll take us down to three, seven, five.
That's not.
Why am I not done talking?
It's a lot of money, but it's not horrible.
For the radio.
Yeah. I mean, I, I know that that's a, that's a big number, but I mean, it's not like we haven't invested in a lot of things like that that have been way more than that. So we'll find a way to pay for it.
Two hundred dollar, we'll have to do it.
Yeah, not a choice. So we could stick it in the budget for the next couple of years too and offset those costs for longer.
Chris, do you know what the price of these radios have went up or gonna go up or?
Uh, I don't.
You dare ask?
I don't dare ask.
It's gonna be plenty. It's kind of the same prod, prod, problem though. Fifty-three counties are looking for maybe, you know, everybody's buying radios at the same time. So it's like, if you've got you've got ten things and there's twenty people that, the people are looking for twenty of them, boy, it's gonna price these suckers up.
You know, the other day a radio was having nine hundred dollars and now it came down to seven fifty. All right, it's going the right direction anyway. How far is it gonna come down?
Yeah.
DOT meeting discussion. That's great.
Yeah.
I mean, it was so much more. I didn't finish the meeting out of High Plains that night. I went to a music concert with my granddaughter, but, uh, just the atmosphere, we were in a small room and a small setting, but I think it would really help the community if we could get them out there and, you know, and get a sit-down and, you know, get them, explain some of this and they seem to come across real well, I thought.
Well, even a, a community meeting would be good, but I think they would, the offer of them to say, you know, talk, sit down and talk with those partners that are gonna be the larger partners out on that highway. So if they sat down and visited with, with, you know, John and Brian out of High Plains maybe and, you know, so at least even if they don't agree with what they're planning on doing and, and we still have their input and we can then bring that into the whole conversation, I think would be beneficial too. You know, maybe it would alleviate some of their concerns. Maybe it would bring up different concerns. I don't know, but it's, it's good to have that give and take.
That they were very receptive of coming back up.
Well, you know, the, the dynamics of the traffic out there between the recreational vehicles and then they all be commercial vehicles in and out of, go to drive bean and, you know, diamonds and gravel trucks and clothes.
Concrete plant.
The concrete plant and then, uh, um, go to petroleum.
Yeah, Joe's gonna be pulling some big tanks in and out of that place that he gets done out there.
In and out of there, you know, and, and, yeah. Um, I think they're, they have their work cut out for them designing a, coming up with a good design that's gonna work for everybody.
I really think we're talking to the right people.
I, I do. I, I was very impressed because I, I was not only know what the J-turns, I was hell no. And I've, I've softened a bit listening to them. So.
Well, I, I, I like the concept of, you know, like the, what we talked about, wider lanes, wider, you know, ball bouts if they have to do it to make sure we can get trucks turned around. I'm not saying that I'm completely sold either, but I've heard good, good things, you know, at least we're hopefully moving in the right direction.
Yeah. So.
Reason I brought up stoplights in our traffic signals or whatever you wanna call them, but some of these controversial intersections that where the J-turns are gonna go. Maybe the people that are using these all the time and live around there, maybe they'd be more receptive to a stoplight, but like she said, the feds won't let you do it.
Yeah.
You know, that's the traffic count is that big, well, and you're tired. You can't do this project without them. The state can't do it without the reds.
Well, I didn't know, sorry, I can't remember what it is, but they said stoplights probably wouldn't be. A menable item. Because people don't like to stop if they don't have.
Right, but I mean, to slow, slow traffic down, you know, for the local people, you know.
I I like the concept of, like they said, if they're gonna put all these turns in, hopefully the lighting and everything like that, that would be a huge thing because. Anything you can do within that corridor to make it feel different, then all of a sudden, maybe you can decrease the speed a little bit. People will recognize, okay, there's lights, there's more things trapped, you know, closing it in. Then maybe fifty-five feels right versus seventy and all of a sudden you're you're talking, okay, there are crashes, less serious crashes. I mean, like you said, safety is the number one concern. But you have to balance that with making sure the people in the community are comfortable with the roadway and the corridor and everything too, so. I think we're heading in the right direction.
Those higher speed crashes, speaking from experience, you know, I mean, a a seventy mile per hour crash is probably twice as deadly as fifty mile per hour crash. I mean, because you're just carrying that much more energy.
Yeah, yeah.
But what is it? Force equals mass times velocity squared. The velocity squared is the thing that matters.
Yes, I believe so. Back to my physics class anyway, but.
Taking the huge thing, we gotta get it.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to do.
But I thought the meeting went really well too, and and I really appreciated the fact that they took the time to come up here and I hope that we can see them again. I don't know about the engineering firm. I have no opinion on it, but I will say that it was nice talking to the state, so that was good. It came across so well.
Yeah, I thought so. I I was, yeah.
Chiming into each other and just did a really good job with three of ours.
And to follow the chain of command, these are the folks that are telling engineers what to do.
I hope it's not the other way around, you know, hopefully, you know, these are the people that'll inform them and say, hey, you're designing it, but this is the things we've heard that we need to have see in this to make it. Affordable to the community.
He said, you can tell right away that meeting at High Plains, god damn, let's get this over with, you know.
Probably why we do, yeah.
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 That dare be awesome for sure.
Further discussion on DOT meeting?
Let's just keep in contact with them and.
Home state credit abatement. Move it through.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those favor signiflers saying aye, aye? All the same side? Motion carries. Now we'll go on to discussion on Lake Region Training Center.
Um, so back in October, we made a motion um, when Sean came to us and presented. Um, about us supporting half of the Lake Region Training Center. Um, and that we supported him by paying half of the bills.
Yes.
Okay, so. Now that the new year has started and we've kind of gotten things somewhat rolling. Um, what we've come to find out is like, he has no money. So all these bills are coming in. And he's scanning and emailing and. I write checks once a week. The city doesn't pay, they pay quarter. So.
So we're not getting the bills paid on time, in other words.
Right, so I told him that I was going to bring back to to this board to make a motion to just. Like instead of us paying half the bills, that we just cut him a check. For ten thousand dollars, he takes care of the bills. He can. I kind of think the city will follow. Well, I've been talking with Linda, so.
Oh, and what what, not a rating, what what was our cap that he projected again, one month over the year?
Um, it was like eighty-two, um, but the insurance, the insurance portion of it went up by like a thousand. Where he had um, that it was two thousand dollars a year and it was free. Like an insurance that would adequately cover.
So eighty-two hundred plus fifteen hundred covers him for the year.
He holds.
So that's what we've essentially committed to at that point, and if we just give him the money upfront, then they'll, he can just cut the bills out of there.
Kind of, kind of like we do with state and with the, you know.
Yes. Would we still, just out of curiosity, because the the bills were a projection.
Right.
Would we still see the bills every month, not necessarily us, but you, just to make sure that he's staying on track? Or quarterly at least, just so we know he's doing okay.
I think he's willing to.
Yeah, he seems very minimalistic.
Yeah, yeah, you know, because when we.
I'll make, we we haven't paid it yet.
No, no.
I'll make the motion that we. Cut, who's who's running it? They got a five oh one C three for themselves or they got Lake Region? They have one?
Yep, yep.
So I I'll I'll make a motion that we we cut ten thousand dollars or provide ten thousand dollars to that five oh one C three for the uh. Lake Region Training Center so that they can pay the bills on time.
I guess. Okay, we have a motion in a second uh, to annualize our payments uh, to the Lake Region Training Center. Uh, any further discussion?
I think it will help them. It will be less work for everybody because.
Great, I'm simple to me.
Yeah, it it just kind of got really complicated very quickly and.
This is a roll call?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Brown.
Hi.
Pyfon.
Hi.
Fred.
Hi.
Wakefield.
Hi.
Thank you.
Anything else on this?
No, that would, that'll. I'll cut less money for me too.
Very good. Visitors and delegations? Okay, portfolios. Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Pyfon.
Okay, um, I have four, I haven't met before with doubles lakes since I, it was last year. Uh, we have meeting tomorrow as well as social services tomorrow. Um, our committee we talked about, um, library, um, I don't think I've been here since we, I think I have, but I just wasn't sure if I had a don't yet. We hired our our new director, uh, so Celeste Urtev, who was our previous assistant director is now the, is the direct. And we decided to do something a little bit different. We were going to have a director and an assistant director. Celeste is the director of operations, so she runs the operations in the of the overall library, and then we have uh. Maddie Cummings, who would be Bo's wife actually, uh, she came to us, uh, she has a lot of experience with um. Nonprofits and grant writing and things of that nature, so she is going to do uh outreach and innovation for the for the library. So she is going to focus on. Getting the word out, writing grants, trying to get money in, uh, things of that nature. So we're excited to have her on board. She has a lot of energy and she's young, so we're excited for that. Um, we're gonna have to delineate duties a little bit, obviously, on who's kind of in charge of what, but she's jumped right in and uh. Celeste has has uh, has been happy to work with her and we've been, everything seems to be going well so far, what I can see, so uh happy about that. Um, trying to think of what else.
Grant already, you know.
Yes, yeah, she worked with, uh, I'm trying to remember, I don't wanna misspeak, but. Uh, when she was in college, she worked with Pardo Moorhead, uh, I don't remember if it was Opera or something like that, but she's done. Done stuff like that with nonprofits, so uh, she's kind of worked in that space before, so I really think she's gonna be a good fit, and the thought process was. Celeste will, you know, is is closely retired man, so she'll kind of impart her knowledge, they'll learn together and then hopefully maybe it's a point of transition that it's, you know, make that work and then, you know. We'll see how that kind of functions, but we're hoping that that'll work well. Um. Uh, extension, um, I know I've got meetings with them for their reviews next week, I believe. And a reminder to all the farmers out there that if you don't have your uh, your uh. Pesticide training done, pesticide trainings are coming. Don't forget that. Um, other than that. Uh, county housing authority, everything seems to be, we're starting to get things under control over there, so. It's still again, so we're getting to take care of it. It's working pretty well. I don't think it's a no.
Very good. Commissioner Fred?
Well, Law Enforcement Center will meet tomorrow. I'll let Ed talk about that a few once, but Airport Authority, we met yesterday. Um. Meetings are. And very involved and and going well, um. Like I said, we are working on expansion, um, sixteen point three or something million dollars worth of. Of ARPA money or COVID money that the federal government gave to airports a long time ago. We got our assurance, we've got our engineer working on uh designs for a new terminal or a terminal expansion, I guess it will be. And then uh, facility operations, expansion, and uh, I think things are are moving ahead at the airport. Um. Really, really nicely, um, so, yeah, excited about that. Beth and and Christie in the tax office, uh, let me know that they will be out of the office tomorrow and. Thursday this week for training, uh, so continuing education down in Pardo, so. Um, if somebody's calling and writing about the tax office being closed, they're. You can be more knowledgeable, so. Um, sometimes when we have small staffed offices, they have to attend training and uh. It it's, I guess, no better time than than now, so. That's what I have. Uh, lake level forecast from the water perspective. We'll be getting those out every two weeks from the National Weather Service. Uh, I think they're a little high on some of their numbers, but um, we will continue to monitor those and uh. And uh, you know, I I I think we could probably expect a one and a half to two foot rise on the lake. Um, this year, given how much rain we received between end of August through the end of October. Kind of thing, we were up within the entire basin on precipitation, but. It all depends, there's so many different parameters on how the spring comes, but they're telling us. Expect a a three, three and a half, four foot rise, but I don't think they're. I think they're exaggerating a little bit, you know, these numbers come from a lot of different numbers that they put together and I think they're a little high. Right.
Springtime hotel.
Good, anything else? Perfect. Mr. Brown?
Senior Senator Cathy's in South Africa visiting relatives, so. I'm meeting this month. At the jail, expect a new captain by the end of this month, coming from Arizona, I think I've seen the thought. Wife took a job at the uh. College for the daycare out there, administrative. And the jail went running off fifty-five to sixty, have been able to stay below the sixty-five mark. They're going pretty well, that's a cold. And they're going pretty good now.
That's correct.
We have no prisoners, always anywhere else.
Very good, very, very good.
That's it.
Um, I don't know that I have a whole lot to announce. I got a call from uh. Al McKay, District Health, said that he's gonna be going around to the different o- office departments in the courthouse. Uh, offering COVID tests uh, for for people in the public. I told him I thought that was a fine idea, you know, just have them so that if somebody walks into an office and they wanna take one, they can. Um, other than that, I don't, I don't know that I've had any meeting.
So did they get an allotment of those rapid test ones?
Yeah, so that's good.
Can the individual do it themselves?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, we we s- we did like, done a couple days ago, we did the air cough, we thought, well, what the heck, let's see if it works.
I I I took one this morning.
Not wrong with that, that's what they're there for, that's it.
You know, I, a little bit of a scratchy throat this morning, so I thought while they're sitting on the desk, I'll use one, so I did and I'm negative. So it must be something other than COVID.
Not much fresh air.
But 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 they're 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 handy and and uh, here for the public to use and employees. Keep an employee safe and you can build it up in operation.
Absolutely, yeah, and encourage their use, and I'm glad, I'm glad that, you know, some of these officers were willing to have them, I thought it was a great field.
I think everybody took one at Super Bowl, they must have, somebody wore it now.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Yeah, one thing just to keep in the back of your mind. When we're doing the vote on our, increasing our fed mills. I don't know if we wanna do it to this vote or the next vote or whatever, just keep it in the back of your mind.
When will we have deadline to make that decision, Kenny?
It's gotta be before April to get it done.
Before end of June?
You also have the county extension.
Yeah.
To take about as well.
I think.
If we, if those votes pass, is it way to win it, is it good for forever after that, or is it how how many years is it?
Ten more with that one, yeah.
Ten. Um, I think the last turn it was.
Yeah.
Ten years.
Yeah, my my main not concern, but it's, we're gonna have to find a way to explain when we put these on the ballot to people that if they don't pass. We've got some problems because we've got a general fund mill cap and if we're, what, what's the two and a half for the extension?
Yep.
So that's twelve and a half mills off the top, we're at the, we're pretty much at the general fund mill cap at that point.
And we're at forty-eight now.
So, I mean, and some people might see that as a benefit because that means you can't spend more, I guess, but at the same time, if you can't spend more and you have things, you need to spend things on, it makes it real, real tough. So we're gonna have to find a way to explain that to people.
Years, you're like, I'll even tap.
Yeah, we're having a number here.
Yeah. Yeah, it it just, it just ties your hands on the cap, I mean, then all of a sudden you're gonna start seeing your road system get worse and, I mean, it's just a guarantee.
One thing to keep in mind with the road mills, though, is they're there already, they're just, they're not increasing, you know, they're just.
Yeah, it's just a continuation of, and same with the extension, but it's just like everyone will look at it as, oh, we can get some money back. Well, yeah, but the time you get your money back means. You're gonna get something worse.
Right, that's just how it is.
You know, we're.
Can we get, you know, like, four inch office to sell it that way from home?
Um, didn't she?
Yeah, there's things we can and cannot do, and it's the same from the commission, I would think. I mean, we can't go out and show for it, but we can obviously explain to people what it does and what it doesn't do, so they have a chance.
Exactly, exactly like home move back, I mean, it's, you can't go out there and twist people's arms.
Yeah, we're not gonna spend money and put signs up, but we need to have a good effort to explain to people why it does what it does, and that it's a positive benefit.
Now gather some wording and um. Information that's been passed between other counties of how they're gonna do, you know, when they're gonna do it.
Well, yeah, I think that that depends too, you know, do we wanna all go at the same time or do we gotta wanna split them or how much to look at.
I don't think that you should put both of them on at the same time.
Well, whichever one, whichever one you put on second will have a harder role of it then, right?
I think you should do, I think.
Right, I mean, what I mean is like the next year, that people will say, well, God, we just gave them this for this other thing.
Right.
Plus you've got the city and the schools all.
Everybody's doing it, that's the thing. We almost need to coordinate with all the other public entities and say, what are you planning on putting yours on so that we can kinda. Scare them through the primaries and the generals, this, that that's so they don't get confused too.
And what, once you've got, you don't have to go through primary and general, just one?
Just one.
Just this one.
So so if you.
Primary is one.
So if it fails in the primary, you could do it against the general.
I'm wondering if we should maybe look at that road right away.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could put a vote on in the primary. Yeah, I think that'd be acceptable.
Because you have till.
Twenty-four.
Twenty, yeah, well, election twenty-four.
You're essentially gonna get, you're essentially gonna get four regular elections to try to get them passed, yes.
You're good.
But you could also call a special if you really truly needed to, but you don't wanna be that.
Yeah, exactly, but but if if it had been voted down a couple times and you call a special, it would crater, that's like.
It'd be done. I I don't disagree.
That's how people are, you know.
That's what I'm saying, I think we need to talk to the other public entities and see how they're gonna be handling there, so we can at least have a.
As we get closer to the law, it'll probably be a lot more.
Yeah.
It would probably be worthwhile to try to go front, right? I mean, just put it on there, get it out there. And if it passes, great, I mean, good luck to everybody else.
The only one that needs to do is school district. Your admin primary.
That is only the city, though, I mean, oh, yeah, the school districts.
City must be what, same, I don't know whether they.
But the school districts, yeah, but the school district's gonna have to do theirs whenever they have.
Right.
Um, their election, and their election's usually in July. Was it June? Is it first week of June?
First Tuesday, I think.
So it's before our election day then?
Well.
Right around the.
I don't know because they're trying to coordinate with hours coming.
They're trying to coordinate. Oh, okay. Oh, okay, okay, well, that'd be on the same time then.
Instead of having, um, you know, city vote at this school, rural vote at this school, that you just have a section of the memorial building, that's the school election over there, this is the
Yeah.
So they'll have to do some creative.
Might be all on the same day. You can get out there the first.
Well, the city will be doing. You know, the city's on the same as ours.
Yeah, cities are the same.
The school district's gonna be the same. So the man's up. Okay, so.
Fun times.
Already.
Well, anything else? You have a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
We're adjourned, thank you all. Sorry I was late.
Did you just forget to, we were at.
No, I was, I was actually showing my, one of my rental properties and it was down in.